Good morning. The Brazos County Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session May 13th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom of the Brazos County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Bryan, Texas. The public may watch the meeting on the Brazos County Commissioners' Court YouTube. And now we'll go to number one with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, as we reflect this week on National Police Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th, we just want to give you great thanks for all those men and women that served to keep us safe, all those that have paid the ultimate price. We ask you, Lord, to please protect all those that are serving today, each and every day, as they put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe. Bless all those men and women in our military and first responders elsewhere as well. Thank you, God, for coming to save us. Please, Lord, bring us closer to you so that we might be closer to each other in you. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Number two calls for citizens' input and concerns. And so the first person to come up will be Jocelyn Teck. You can't hear me? Thank you. I'm sorry. It is on. So Citizens Input, Jocelyn.
Jack.
Thank you. Please speak into the mic.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Jacqueline Teck, and I'm here today to express my opposition to the Inner Loop East project, as well as my concerns over how this project has been presented to the public, especially the residents on the east side of Brazos County. Last week, Judge Peters made statements at the end of the meeting detailing a timeline of events leading up to the trip on 2022. He began with the transportation workshop that took place in July of 2022. We found the sign-in sheet for that workshop, and I'd like to review it. There were 45 in attendance, in addition to the members of the court. Thirty-four of those were government employees. Nine were paid to be there representing their employer or other quasi-governmental agencies like the EDC or the Chamber. There was one reporter from the media, and then there was one citizen, who was actually Chuck Condala, who was running for office at the time. These 45 people may be citizens, but let's also recognize that every one of them had actual business before the court or were hoping for business from the court's proceedings. The bigger issue is the fact that we, your constituents, were never notified. If the county did meet the minimum statutory requirements of posting a notice on a bulletin board in the courthouse 72 hours prior to the workshop, it clearly wasn't sufficient. For a discussion of a topic with the potential to impact so many people's lives, don't you feel a moral obligation to do something more than just the bare minimum? If you wanted to engage the citizens on the topic and have some discussions, you could have issued a press release or maybe even sent out a postcard to get their attention. I'd like to quickly read a passage from The Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy, which is a science fiction novel. And the protagonist of the story is amusingly trying to stop the local council from demolishing his house to make way for a bypass. The council says, "But the plans were on display." And he says, "On display, I eventually had to go down to the cellar to find them." That's the display department with a flashlight. "Ah, well, the lights had probably gone. So had the stairs. But look, you found the notice, didn't you?" "Yes," said Arthur. "Yes, I did. It was on display in the bottom of a locked filing cabinet, stuck in a disused lavatory with a sign on the door saying, 'Beware of the leopard.'" This is satire, of course, and I'm not saying you did anything quite this silly, but the point is valid. For something so important, this affects your citizens' livelihoods, their homes, their family legacies. We deserve more than a flyer on a bulletin or a small post on a governmental website. There should have been a big outreach effort to the community from the start. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beverly Greenwood.
Thank you, Jacqueline. I have lots of thanks for her. She's a great woman. My name's Beverly Greenwood. I'm going to continue where Jacqueline left off. So last week, the judge also discussed the mailers. And he talked about two different mailers, but actually, there were three. And those three were given to us by John Polster in December. The one that the judge showed last week, I have it on the website. I put everything on the website this morning, so you can see all of the information that we're discussing today. But the map on this one, the line, the red line he discussed, actually goes through Merrimott and Copperfield. And this is what he's saying we were supposed to get our information to vote on. And that map that he did show, that he blew it up, he had to blow it up huge, so you could even see that it said Inner East Loop. And that map, I couldn't even find that in the July 28th, 2022 minutes. So I don't think that that map was even shown at that workshop four years ago, three years ago. So when you look at these mailers, the big question I have, and like, once again, this is on the website, this was sponsored by a PAC. The PAC that was started by the Treasurer Larry Hodges actually is in the printing business. He owned Copy Corner. I would think somebody that owns Copy Corner could look at these and say, "They can't see that. They can't, this is illegible. They can't read it." And then the Excel spreadsheet that he showed you where it had the list, we're not arguing that that wasn't shown at that meeting. It was in the minutes, and we've talked about it since our first movie that I put out back in February. But it was also on this one, and it's so tiny. I'll let all of you look at this afterwards. You can't see anything. There's no Inner East Loop. You can't read it. And on this one, there's not even a red line to show the Inner East Loop. So if those are the projects, it's not even on this mailer at all. The PAC, the people that donated to it, Commissioner Nancy Berry donated. She was also the chair of the NPO Policy Board. She sat next to Judge Peters for, what, 10 years while she and Dan Rudge were busy drawing the lines for the map? So he said that I falsely accused him, but he told this to Rusty Sarette, that I accused him of changing where the line was so it wouldn't hit his property, which, for the record, I didn't say that. I just showed the lines, and I showed where his property was, and he deduced that I was implying that he had the line moved, when in fact, I wasn't doing that. I was just showing everybody what's out there to see. And they all decided, "Ah, that looks a little questionable. Why didn't the judge recuse himself? Why didn't he recuse himself? It doesn't go anywhere near his property. He owns thousands of acres out there, and it just misses him." So more on the PAC. I have everybody that donated, I have it listed in there. Quiddity donated. One of Quiddity's subcontractors donated. Doug Bramwell, VP of Quiddity, donated. These are the people that supported the PAC that sent these mailers that the Treasurer, Larry Hodges, who's a professional printer, can't even make sure that it's printed large enough for us to see. And this is what we're supposed to base our vote on? And why does a judge have anything to do with a PAC? How does he know we all received it? Did he call Larry Hodges? Like, how does that work? How does a judge that's supposed to recuse himself and not get involved in a project know what the PAC did? Another topic I need to address quickly is that it was told to me, "I'm not a liar. I may be many things, but I'm not a liar." So when I hear, hmm, I'll let Kyle finish that one. That was, oh, he didn't say, that was my timer. So I heard that the rumor about the death threats were started by Kyle and I.
My timer.
Okay, you heard what I said.
Thank you. We can ask for an extra minute. No, sir. That's what I thought. I spoke to the judge at Legends last Tuesday, and I do thank him for being there, as well as the rest of y'all. We spoke regarding his statement that backing the loop is backing the will of the people because 67% of voters who voted were in favor of Prop A, and he called it a mandate. I mentioned low voter turnout, and I promised him numbers. He's not here, but I'll give them anyways. Referring to the report on the election office, Brazos County had 126,229 registered voters on the day of the election, and only 55,768, or roughly 44%, actually voted in the bond portion of that election. Of that number, only 37,436, or 29% of the registered voters, voted in favor of Prop A. I don't see how that's a mandate. However, those that did vote, voted in favor, so we acknowledge the truthfulness of his statement. But I ask, and we ask, that you extend us the same courtesy and acknowledge our truthfulness. So what is ours? Well, let's talk the RMA and Prop B. If you recall, there's a video from court on November 15th, 2022, when the judge had an exchange with a citizen about Prop B. There, in court, the judge stated that he was aware that the public voted down Prop B and that projects the RMA hope pursue. So what were those projects? Reading the RMA website, the three projects listed were the Harrington Road and William D. Fitch intersection, Rolles Campus access, and the Inner East Loop. So on November 15th, just one week after the election, he acknowledged on record that these three projects were defeated by the Brazos County voters. Since we voted down the Inner East Loop over Prop B, why would he execute a contract for a project that he said the court had voted down? Okay, so what's our truth? Let's look at the Prop B vote. Those RMA projects discussed were very unpopular. Only 23,018 votes, or a mere 18% of registered voters, voted in favor of Prop B and the Inner East Loop. Should we call that a mandate? Back to Prop A. Judge stated he's pursuing the loop because he said he wanted to represent the voters, along with the six other roadways that were on Prop A. I asked him, "Since the voters now realize that Prop A included the loop and no one wants it, why not put the bond money towards other projects? I understand, as he said, that there are funding for other projects, but how about funding another? Or actually do what the ballot said and fix existing roads in precinct four, or three, or one? You told me that there's a contract for the loop. I said, 'You could cancel that loop because the contract states that you can.'" His reply to me was that it would be a hassle. This is recorded. "And it would cost the county money." It wouldn't. I asked him then, and I ask him now, "Does that mean you are willing to take people's homes, their ranches, their farms, and their land because it would be a hassle and cost the county some money to cancel the contract?" You couldn't answer me then. He couldn't, and I know he won't now, especially since he's not here. It's funny to me that anyone I've spoken to about this whole ordeal, giving them all the details, has agreed that transparency is lacking, but he says no. I'll grant you that since the loop was put down on the NPO's map in 2017, it's been public information, but I only concede that because it was on the website. I'll also say that 2017 was a perfect time to contact all those affected. No one was. And no one was when the City of Bryan moved it to accommodate Stella. I lived out there and wasn't contacted despite the City of Bryan engineers' lie to the Planning and Zoning Board that we were all contacted. No one was until last fall's postcard, but citizenship takes participation. Great. It's all public information. You know, but you have to know that you need to look for it. You also have to know where to look, and you need to know how to find it. Going back to that quote that you gave, ma'am, yeah, that's transparency. Outside of the government officials, developers, and contractors, regular citizens had no idea. Those are facts.
All right, I'm a little covered in ground, so try to keep up. Kyle Greenwood, Brazos County. At the July Transportation Workshop, the judge mentioned last week at the end of session, he commented, "At that transportation workshop, John Polster stood here at this lectern, told the court, if the county would use the bond funds to do four things, right away, excuse me, environmental clearance, schematic design, right-of-way acquisition, and utility relocation, he could get it picked up by Text Dot within six to nine months." So when somebody states the project may not happen in their lifetime, that sounds disingenuous when they were just told the project would get picked up within six to nine months. That's less than a year. So when we are told we don't have the funds for it, I look at the ballot language that says right here, "Ballot funds can be used for," and I quote, "including the acquisition of land and right-of-way." So when we're told there's no funds for this, that sounds disingenuous, like maybe somebody's not being fully honest with us. Additionally, with regard to the ballot language, I stand behind my statement from two weeks ago. If the court so chose, they could vacate the entire draft project list and move forward with something else totally different. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Finally, when it said it's just a study, I would say that also doesn't seem to be quite true. When I look at the contract from Quiddity, it says right here, "Under additional services, right-of-way mapping and acquisition may be provided, along with testimony at eminent domain proceedings." If that wasn't the intention for them to use this, why would it be included in the contract in the first place? Additionally, I'll point out the contract does have a clause right here stating it can be suspended or canceled at any time. So a project of this magnitude with the potential to impact so many people's lives should have been discussed with the public for years ad nauseam before any action was taken forward with it. The fact is, the property owners have never been notified. Not in 2016, when Dan Rudge drew the line across our property and Nancy Berry approved it. Not in 2017, when Carl Moody moved the line out of Emerald Forest. Not in 2019, when the City of Bryan was adjusting the line to accommodate economic development. Not at the 2022 Transportation Workshop, or prior to the bond election, or at any point in between. So don't claim that there's been full transparency, because clearly, there has not. The fact remains, the property owners have never been notified. What we see is this map from the City of Bryan, showing how they would like to carve up the community to fulfill the dreams of the Bryan mayor, to have neighborhoods full of $700,000 to $800,000 homes and multiple shopping and retail locations as an alternative to South College Station. When we consider all these facts in light of the continued stonewalling of this court, it doesn't appear as if you're doing the will of the people. It looks more like a coordinated effort between the county and the City of Bryan to abuse the power of eminent domain and deprive us all of our private property rights. It's not my intent to be disrespectful to this court or any member thereof, but we sincerely desire to have a public discussion on the record with the court. We all know, anything that happens outside the court bears no legal weight, and that's why we're pushing for this. So it would be good if the court would consider our request to extend the comment period from 17 to 90 days, so that everybody can comment. It would be better if the court would consider placing this on the court's agenda so that we could have a discussion, but ultimately, it would be best if the court would consider pausing the contract for 90 days, as the contract says it can be done, so that we can have a full public discussion and determine once and for all whether or not the public fully supports this project. In this scenario, the court bears no risk and no cost. If the court is right, and there is overwhelming public support, it will be made clear. But if we're right, that will also be made clear.
All right, let's see if I can hit four minutes this time. So today, I'm going to end up requesting two main things that we review, that we pause the Quiddity contract, that we have an agenda item or a workshop to discuss the Quiddity contract, primarily because new information has come to light in the last workshop presentation where the preliminary traffic study that should have been done before the $13 million or $12 million, however much it ends up being, contract was even started, because it would only cost a couple of hundred thousand, to show what it is showing, that there is not going to be any congestion in the eastern part of the county in 2050, and that this road will not relieve any congestion because there won't be any congestion. This is something that has always been known because of the NPO forecast of demography and where people would live. I would also like to request that we have a workshop and/or agenda item to discuss John Polster and why exactly he's being paid $15,000 a month. For what? And for why? And for how? I don't know anything about that. I don't understand, what is he doing? What is he doing for the five or six other counties, making roughly $1 million a year across the state of Texas? And then, but anyways. So again, with the disingenuousness that people have been pulling out from the county and from its agents. So we got an email from Quiddity right after this last workshop. "In Brazos County, this same data, meaning the state demography data, serves as a foundational input for the BCS NPO as they develop their major thoroughfare concept plans and assess future transportation needs. There is a plan by the NPO. There is state demography data, but that is as relevant to the actual plan as if I tell you the fact that there is an ocean somewhere means that I can sell you beachfront property in Arizona." The actual plan, what's been pushing forward, this thing, is Dan Rudge at the NPO sometime before 2017 leaned back and decided that a highway would look good about there. And that is a direct quote from Dan Rudge, from the original workshop meeting in November. Unfortunately, not on video, because I didn't know I needed to have that lack of faith in my public servants. After Dan Rudge drew that on the map, which shouldn't have done much of anything for quite a long time, we get the con artist from Dallas coming down here, and John Polster whispering either sweet nothings about Text Dot money or campfire horse stories about how Text Dot's going to run us over. And we're not really sure, because after Dan Polster comes down here, we no longer are getting anything. Everything that we're getting from the county and its agents is disassembling, obstruction, I mean, it's just everything up to outright lies and sometimes even lies. And so then, we don't really know what Dan Rudge told John. We don't really know what stories Dan Rudge, I mean, sorry, John Polster told. And so then, after that, it all went off the rails. In the end, there is a demographic study by the NPO that clearly illustrates the NPO believes that all these people that are moving to Brazos County are going to move to Bryan, College Station, and up and down six, which clearly does not call for a loop through the eastern county. Clearly shows that it would be a waste of money. This should have been known from the actual study in 2017, which keeps getting thrown in my face, but as far as I can tell, I'm the only person in Brazos County who's ever actually looked at it. And then this has been reconfirmed because the preliminary traffic study that would have cost $100,000 or $200,000 instead of the $11.4 billion has finally been done and clearly illustrates that by 2050, the highways on the eastern part of Brazos County, the far eastern Brazos County, will see almost no increase in traffic, and close in, will see an increase in the rectangle bounded by Elmo Reeden, Boomville, and W.J. Bryan, close to six.
That's your time, sir.
Yes. Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me okay? I'm Charlotte Stevers. I'm here to speak in reference to the interest items that Judge Peters showed us at the end of the meeting last week, pointing to transparency. And all the slides were very interesting. I couldn't really read them or see them, but it was all new information to me. And I am a landowner. I am a registered voter, and I have voted in every election since I've been here. And I did vote against the bond election because I couldn't find out what was in it. He showed us a slide that was a spreadsheet that was presented at the workshop in July 28th. twenty eighth of 2022, that had in attendance forty-plus people. And on the spreadsheet, the first item was the inner loop east, first time I'd ever seen this. And the description of it was, "New location, super street, four lanes divided." It was the only item in the list of bond items that involved invoking eminent domain and taking people's homes, properties, private businesses, private lands. The next slide was, I call it the election slide. It showed the results of the election in November of '22. I voted in that election. It said sixty-seven percent of voters voted for Prop A, and that was a clear mandate of the voters. Respect the will of the people must preserve the route for the east loop. I did my little third grade math, and I came, sixty-seven point three percent voted for it, that's true. Look a little deeper, that's thirty point five percent of the registered voters that voted for it. And if you look a little deeper, that's fifteen point five percent of the population of Brazos County in 2022. So I ask, who do our elected officials represent the best interest of? The thirty-seven thousand people that voted for it? Or the hundred and twenty-two thousand people that are registered voters? Or the two hundred and forty-one thousand people that are the population of Brazos County at that time? The next slide was the flyer side, showing the flyer front and back. I had never seen the flyer. It was mailed. We were told it was mailed to every registered voter in Brazos County, not once, but twice. I never received one, I never had to see it, and I don't just live in the county, I live in the affected area of the east loop. So I did have to hunt and pick, I don't have a cube computer, but I have a smartphone, and I was able to find a copy and try to figure out what this flyer was. And there are five paragraphs of verbiage, and when I got down to the third paragraph, aha, maybe this was where I was supposed to know all of this that was going to happen to our neighborhood. In that paragraph, it said Prop A will allow the local investment of infrastructure projects. I guess that means...
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is Connie Banks. Did I say the last name right? Is it Connie?
Connie and I are here to talk about the east loop, and we just moved here two or three years ago from the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And we moved here so my niece could take care of us as we grow older. And so we bought the property in 2019 in Green Branch Ridge, and it was all woods, no... And so then, we finally got our houses built and moved in in December of '21. And through all this, we've never heard anything about the university coming up down across Eagle into Eagle Vista Avenue, and we never heard anything about the loop. So we finally found out about the university HOA thing that we went to in 2024. And there was a gentleman that lives on that street, and it's right by ours, that just moved in, and he didn't know anything about it. You know, and that's a big street to go into, a country residence. And so then we went to the meeting in 2024 at the Brazos Center in Briarcrest and found out something about loop. But, you know, I'm old and I'm confused, and so, but we did find out something about it. So then we started going to meetings and asking questions and trying to figure it out. So then we had the meeting on the twelfth, and we thought, oh, good, I can get all my answers answered. And so we went there with my questions, and I was, didn't really get any of them answered, and I was still confused. And, because the first time they said the loop, in the first meeting we went to, would just take truck drivers. And I've spoken to truck drivers, and they said, no, we're going to go down six. And then I realized at the second meeting, that when we were fixing to leave, we're talking to a Quiddity person that was talking about the road being there, and we asked why I wasn't at north, I mean, on the other side of six where all the traffic is for the schools, and he said, well, that's where they wanted it, and that's what we're doing. And he said, and you can just drive up and down that road. Well, there's, you know, I did find out at that meeting that, oh, they're going to build stores and stuff on that road, it's not just going to be a road, so they're going to take more land off. And in the Proposition A, the official ballot language, it says, my understanding is, that the proposition boldly authorizes funding for the transportation infrastructure project without specifying individual projects. There is no direct mention of the east loop or inner east loop project in the ballot language. The absence of specific project names has led to concerns among community members about transparency, whether voters are fully informed about the funds. And so I, you know, moved from into the country and hoping to enjoy the sunrises in the morning on the front porch and the sunset on the back patio, and all the deer and the beautiful creation that God created out there, and the peace. And I really thought, because of Texas A&amp;M, it would still stay small. And recently, I understand that Texas A&amp;M did a camp on the enrollment, and that some of the federal funding's been cut really low. That's my understanding. So we're going to increase Highway Six, and my understanding is one lane each way. I don't know why we don't make it two. Somewhere along the way said it would be just as easy, you wouldn't have to... And then we have Boomville, and then we have the east loop. And so, anyway, I was, don't want it to be like Houston or Dallas, I would have stayed in Dallas. And I enjoy God's creation and the animals, and I just love deer. In fact, last night, there was deer laying out in our backyard, and one was laying down and one was eating, and I was so excited, because fewer and fewer deer we see. So I'm suggesting that we don't have an east loop and take away people's property and people's...
That's your time. I was letting you finish your sentence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Vitulie.
Good morning, I'm Ronnie Vitulie, Precinct Two. What I've witnessed in this court, either in person or watching online, has become apparent to me that there's a disconnect between some of you on the court and your constituents. I would like to take Commissioners Nettles and Brown out of these comments, because they have only served for four months. There are several significant issues this court has discussed and ruled on that seem to be in contrast to what the majority of your constituents want. Issues such as election, security, polling places, where the county is spending money, like the medical examiner's office and the proposed building from the courthouse. Propositions A and B, the appearance of the court's focus on economic development by approving tax abatements, and of course, this tax rate fiasco we have seen the past couple of years. The issue I'd like to focus on in the short time I have is putting items on the agenda, so a legitimate discussion about a topic can take place versus a four-minute, one-way citizen's comment. As a personal example, in July of 2022, 2023, I requested via email to Commissioner Condala an item be placed on the agendas court concerning Interstate fourteen and two-fourteen Loop. This was one of the major topics in the 2022 election, especially in Precinct Two. But since Mr. Condala taking office in January of '23, not one word had been spoken concerning this impactful topic. I requested an agenda item be placed on the court's agenda concerning the matter in response via email from Commissioner Condala, which quote, "While the court does not make a practice of placing citizens' presentations on the agenda, I would like to make myself and general counsel available to you." I declined the offer. This was a matter I wanted the public to hear and be able to comment on. This was one of the major campaign issues, and we can't get it on the agenda of the Commissioners' Court. The no east loop movement has been going on for months now, and it can't be added to the agenda to have an open discussion where questions can be answered to Commissioners, and we get to hear your responses. Commissioners, you have the authority to add an agenda item to the agenda. Judge Peters is not the only one that can do so. I ask any and all of you to add the east loop issue to a future agenda item at the Commissioners' Court. Not having a public submitted agenda item added to the agenda is not because you can't. By law, do so, it's because you don't want to. Why is that? I was mayor in Corton for over ten years. We are a general law city, and our Open Meetings Act is dictated by the same statutes as the county. As the person who created and posted the agenda, I never turned down a request from a citizen to put an item they requested on the agenda. It's irrelevant that I potentially thought it wasn't important enough, or I didn't want the council to discuss it. It was important because the citizen thought it was important. And remember, as elected officials, we are there to serve. You are here to serve the citizens of this county. They are, in fact, your boss. In my work world, this would be considered insubordination. In Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, he said this, "Government of the people, by the people, and for the people." The key point here, "for the people." We can't even have a discussion with our elected officials. This is not demonstrating a government for the people. Government is established and operated with the people's consent and for their benefit. In the cases that I have mentioned, we are not feeling it from this body. It appears our voices are not being heard by the court. By the action of this court, the message being sent is our opinions, the public's opinions don't matter, and that you know what is best for us. This is simply not true. That is why it is important to have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Russell McGee.
Good morning, members of the court. My name's Russell McGee, I live out in Precinct Two. You've never seen me here before, I probably represent a lot of citizens who are becoming more and more aware of this east loop issue. I lived on campus as a student back in the 1980s. I was homesick for my farm, I used to drive around eastern and northern Brazos County. I remember when Steve Pollard Road was still a dirt road. After a long career in the Marine Corps, my family and I decided to settle back here in Brazos County, because of all the places we lived, we felt like this was the prettiest. We purchased some property out near the Reliance Community, and more and more people have been moving in there over the last few years. New subdivisions are popping up around me, Los Lobos and Garrison Creek, that's okay, those folks like the country too. And, you know, it's good to have neighbors. But all of us want to get to town where we work. That's what we want to do. We want to get to Bryan, we want to get to College Station, I want to get to where I work on campus, I want to get to the airport. And it's hard to do that. I don't know if you noticed, the east-west thoroughfares are what we need. We need some turn lanes on FM 1179, so traffic doesn't stop dangerously as people turn into Miramont, or some of these other subdivisions that are popping up on 1179. We need improvements to existing roads and bridges, not construction of new ones. Not one of my neighbors out there in Precinct Two is hoping that we can get a shortcut to Houston or to Waco. That's not where we're going every day. We're going to Bryan, we're going to College Station. So I think there's a great deal of misunderstanding regarding what we voted on back in 2022, Proposition A. Proposition A wording, the reporting and advertising all implies improvement of existing roads and bridges. Words like constructing, improving, and maintaining roads and bridges within Brazos County, those were the words on the ballot. Two out of three of those words talk about improving, maintaining, it's improving what we have. There are some who are claiming that the passage of Proposition A in 2022 issues a mandate on building an east loop through eastern Brazos County. That's disingenuous. Words east loop aren't on there. If they were, I would have voted against it. Perhaps the Commissioners had the east loop on a spreadsheet somewhere as one of the many road projects. Now, I do some research before an election, but I never saw that, I never came to the Commissioners' Court. I don't check public notices, I know all of y'all do, but I don't. If I would have seen that, I would have voted against it, because it's not what we need. We don't need to spend this hundred million dollars on a way to get around Highway Six. We need improvements to existing roads and bridges, to get out to the airport, to get to Relus. Anyway, the lesson I've learned through this is never to vote on such a vaguely worded ballot proposition that can be used as a blank check. The lesson I hope this Commissioners' Court learns is to write future ballot propositions in a more specific manner. If you want to build an east loop, put it on there. Give us a chance to vote on it. Otherwise, it gives us the impression that you're trying to hoodwink us, and I don't really think that's the case. To conclude, let me read how KBTX ported the outcome of the election back on November ninth, 2022. This is emblematic of what I believed occurred. Says here, "Proposition A, the one hundred million dollar bond was approved by more than sixty percent of voters. County leaders say that the proposition will speed up and lock in funding from Tech Dot to road improvements on the George Bush Drive and Weldron-Bulburn Road Interchanges." That's right, that's what I voted for. "The bond would also cover a portion of other transportation projects, including the expansion of Highway Six, FM 47 along University Drive, and a new interchange near Relus." That's what KBTX thought that was about. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kathy Vines, Precinct Four. I was appalled by the way the community was treated by this court last week, shocked. Week after week, people have been speaking at this podium about the east loop project, and not once has anybody on this court contradicted what was said. Yet, on the back of the agenda, it says there, "Commissioners may choose not to respond to public comments, except to correct factual inaccuracies." And not once was that opportunity taken when all these people have been speaking. Yet last week, the judge decided at the end of the meeting to grandstand and present his opinions of facts, without allowing anyone to speak in response. And I thought that was beyond the pale. I also am upset by what has come to pass as a policy in this court, which is not listed on the back of this agenda, and that is the sit down and shut up policy. We used to be able to address questions on agenda items, and stand at the podium, and ask for explanations and follow-up on those questions, without limitations. It's never been taken advantage of in the two and a half years I've been attending Commissioners' Court, but all of a sudden, the policy seems to have morphed into five people asking questions on agenda item ten, what is one plus one, then go sit down and shut up and let the court answer, and if the answer is, we went to Florida last week, there's no follow-up opportunity, that's not what I asked. But we are supposed to go down and sit down and shut up, and I think that is not transparent. I think it displays a really horrible treatment of the people. It's so disrespectful, and it's not transparent, it's just, it's very, it's horrible. As far as the east loop stuff goes, I remember the judge saying last week that there was a consulting lawyer who wrote the language for the ballot. I'd love to know who that consulting lawyer was, and who paid for that lawyer. Was it a Quiddity lawyer? And does anybody have a more tyrannical idea than what was presented in court last week? I don't know how any of you can stand by that, and I'd like it corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) That concludes item number two, call for citizens' input and our concerns. Item number three is approval of proclamation number 25-024 proclaiming the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day.
Move to approve. Second.
And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas President John Kennedy signed Public Law 87-2726 on October 1st, 1962, designating May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which the date falls as Police Week. Whereas, all law enforcement agencies of Brazos County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the county. Whereas, members of law enforcement recognize their duties to serve the people of Brazos County by safeguarding life and property, by protection against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent without deception, the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas, during National Police Week and throughout the year, the County of Brazos County recognizes and appreciates the critical contribution and sacrifices of member of law enforcement at all levels. And whereas, during National Police Week, the County of Brazos recognizes and appreciates the incredibly dangerous risk that these individuals face every day while serving their communities. It serves as a reminder of the sacrifices they make to protect and serve others. And whereas, Police Week recognizes and honors hometown heroes who have passed away in the line of duty and recognized current police officers in law enforcement and there. And now, therefore, it be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County thus hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week and May 15th as Police Officers' Memorial Day, where all citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to the many law enforcement employees working in Brazos County for the vital public service they provide. So, do you want to come forward? I guess you guys need to sign this.
Thank you so much for this proclamation and for recognizing the sacrifices that our peace officers make. Last year, 147 peace officers gave their lives in the line of duty. 25% increase. Sadly, the state of Texas led the nation with 18 officers killed. I think that clearly demonstrates the dangers that they face, the sacrifices they make. And I just want to thank our officers, everybody that's here today, for helping people solve problems, keeping the peace, and protecting our community. Thank y'all very much.
All right. That's the big picture.
I needed to give a tip.
Thanks for coming.
I should have given him the proclamation. I should have given him the proclamation. He should have given me an elbow and said, "Go down, go down there."
If you were going to drive to the county fast, I'd have to kind of do it.
I bet their sheriff, they're not going police, the county's police. Stand up, Lambo.
His hair is messed up.
Thank you, y'all. God bless you.
We'll get these, Marshall, get us our signatures. Oh, you be honest, wouldn't you?
Are they working?
Oh, they're all working.
Thank you for that, Chair. Number four. We said, oh.
We have a motion.
There was a motion and a second. All in favor? Any discussion? No? All in favor, say.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course. All right, we go into item number four. The approval to cancel the regular meeting of Commissioners' Court on Tuesday, July 22nd due to lack of quorum. Members of the court will be attending a conference.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? Vote? All in favor, say.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course. All right, we go into item number four. The approval to cancel the regular meeting of Commissioners' Court on Tuesday, July 22nd due to lack of quorum. Members of the court will be attending a conference.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? Vote? All in favor, say.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Motion is approved. Number five, approval to request the veteran service officer for acceptance of four $25 Walmart cards donated by a veteran spouse to be used for the veterans in need of assistance.
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and second. Any discussion? It has been moved and second that we accept these cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? It is approved. Numbers, I'm sorry, I'm so used to sitting and listening instead of doing this. Item number six, approval requested for authorization of wire transfer up to $400,000, $421,712.67 to Human and Health and Human Services Commission for uncompensated care demonstration, year eight, federal year 2019, for the benefit of participating hospitals using funds from the Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item seven, approval requested for authorization of wire transfer up to $778,375.83 for the fiscal year 2025 Hospital Augmentation Reimbursement Program, IGT, for the benefit of participating hospitals using funding from the Brazos County Local Providers' Participation Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
It is. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Number eight, approval for the following job description: Juvenile Services Administration Based Juvenile Probation Officer One.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Number eight, approval for the following job description: Juvenile Services Administration Based Juvenile Probation Officer One.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Number nine, approval requested from the sheriff's office to issue diner club credit cards to investigators Hugh Wallace and Daniel Waggonan with a credit limit for each of $1,000 for travel and emergency use during investigations and work outside of the county.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Who's ever heard of Diner's Club?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that was 1970s Diner's Club. But when I dug a little deeper, Diner's Club is owned by Mastercard. Why don't we have Mastercard instead of Diner's Club? And I don't know who I need to ask this question to. Is there any way that we can get credit cards for our employees that need them, that we get some kind of cash back reimbursement? I don't know if they can do that in the county or not, but as I understand it, we're not getting any points, we're not getting any cash back. All we're doing is using Diner's Club. Nobody uses Diner's Club. So who?
Who would get to use the points and rewards?
Well, if it was cash back, it would just be credited back to the account.
But who would get to use it? Just to the, you mean, to the account that pays the bill?
To the county, yes, ma'am. Here comes Charles. Way to go, Charles.
There are programs available to get reimbursement back to the county. We're investigating to make sure that we get the best deal of that.
Good.
In our evaluation, we're just not quite to the point of pulling the trigger yet.
Okay. And can we switch to a Mastercard instead of a Diner's Club, too, probably?
Our evaluation will include the different types of cards that are available to make sure that the county gets the best deal, just like everything. If the court has a preference for Mastercard, we can exclude all the others. I'm hesitant to do so at the expense of losing out on additional rebate percentages or so forth, but, I mean, whatever the court would like to do.
I had a Diner's Club back in '73, and I gave it up in '78 because nobody took it.
They've serviced us well. I mean, we haven't had any issues or concerns or anything. We have not been able to utilize any additional rebates or what have you, but they've been a serviceable, it's been a serviceable method for us to attain the needs that we have with our credit cards. So I think it is time to look at it, though, and we're starting to do so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Has it been moved and second approved? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Item 10, award of bid number 25-9090, mooring of county riderways for Brazos County Road and Bridge. Recommended vendor, Wayne Pool LLC.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
It's just a shame that nobody from Brazos County tried to get this award, but anyway.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The motion is approved. Approval of contact, excuse me, contract number 25-129 for the statewide automatic voting, excuse me, victim notification service by Silogica Doc... Somebody help me out here.
Silologist?
Silogist Gov, Inc.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I looked through this contract, and from the best I can tell, the state is paying for this. Is that correct? If they're not, then it's an unfunded mandate, in which we see those a lot of...
Attorney general contract, so it might be an unfunded mandate.
We get a lot of those.
No, it's the victim notification system, and yes, they do pay for it. The reason, we are currently with the, another contract, a preis, as far as I know, and this is to go ahead and start implementing the new contract that comes up, I think, September or October. So that's what this is for.
So it is paid by the state?
It is paid for by the state, but it's also mandatory.
Good.
It's also mandatory?
Yes, it's a backhanded grant. It's the best way I can describe it.
That's good news.
Yep, that's good to have, notification service. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The motion is approved. Permission to advertise RFP number CIP 25-580, Farrell Road, Creek Road Reconstruction and Freer, what did I say it by?
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion is approved. Number 13, approval of the following committee for RFP number CIP 25-58, Farrell Road Creek Reconstruction.
Move for approval, A through F?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Number 14, request approval for the final plat of 7-11 Ranch Phase One Lot 6R being a replat of lots 6 and 7, 17.337 acres, Thomas May Survey, A-160, Brazos County, Texas, site located in Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just that this is a local engineering company. Here's another one for the A team, or our team.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Number 15, consider and take action on the Optimum Utility Permit to construct a road board at 1520 Crosswind Drive for fiber optic conduit, site located in Precinct Two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Number 16, Commissioner Minutes for the following dates.
Move for approval, A through F?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Number 17, budget amendment FYI 24-25, I mean, slash 25, Budget Amendments 30-01 through 30-06.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I've got two questions. One has to do with $50,000 being moved to an account for the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, and I guess my question was, does that come from hotel motel taxes? And then the second item that I'm questioning is $175,000 expended to or to... Well, I can't tell what it is. I think it's connection, but I'm not sure. But it's $175,000 from the general fund. So I can get explanations on both of those. I would rest easier at night.
I don't want you to lose sleep, but I can tell you what the $50,000 one is for, for Budget Amendment 30.03. It is using hotel tax funds for that one. Does that answer that question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next one, I want to let Assistant County Auditor respond.
Hi, Marcy Turner, First Assistant County Auditor. That's the $175,000. We have an ILA with the City of College Station on Dartmouth Road and Dartmouth, that Dartmouth reinvestment area, and we're basically going to accrue, they're not requesting any funds this year, but we're going to accrue the expense and put it on our balance sheet so that when they do request funds in future years, we'll have already expensed it.
What is an ILA?
An interlocal agreement. It's attached in that, it's an attachment in your budget amendment.
Okay. But we're not actually spending the money yet.
No, we're basically going to kind of set it aside, and then they, when they have an additional project, they've already submitted $191,000 a couple of years ago. We have a commitment to them of, oh, I've forgotten, the total dollar amount. I can get that for you. But we're basically going to accrue about $200,000, $200,000 to $250,000 for the next couple of years. We'll have the amount that we are required to set aside, fully funded by probably mid of FY 28.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion is approved. Number 18, personnel change status. Approval of personnel change status.
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The motion is approved. Number 19, payment of claims. Approval of payment of claims.
Move for approval, A and B?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. We'll skip number 20 and 21. There will not be an executive session this today. Number 22, acknowledgment of the FY 2024 to FY 2025 budget to actuals by funds as of May 7th, 2025. Acknowledgement of FY 2024 to 2025 contingency budget to actuals by fund as of May 7th, 2025. And number 23 is the Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have 36 in detention, 18 males, 18 females, 32 on electronic monitor.
Thank you. Thank you. Sheriff. Number 2024 is the Sheriff's Report.
Good morning again. 725 in custody this morning, 629 men, 96 women. We have 50 on electronic monitoring. And I meant to mention earlier really quickly that the Peace Officer Memorial Service is tomorrow at Veterans Park and would like to invite everybody to attend.
What time?
At noon.
At noon?
It's a nice ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So to follow up on number 25, is per the announcement of the sheriff, announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics?
I'd like to, to state that Steve Aldrich is home now, former Commissioner Steve Aldrich. He spent a week in the hospital, a week in rehab, and he is back home now, and he is recuperating. So please continue to keep him on your prayers. He's, he has a long road to get back to, to health again, so. And then the other item I'd like to do, I'd like to request that we put a public hearing, workshop hearing for the East Loop. So.
I just wanted to say again with the National Police Week and our Peace Officers Memorial Day tomorrow, that I just want to express the thanks and gratitude we have for all those men and women that serve as police officers. Sheriff, you took my breath away when you said that number, 18 Texas peace officers killed last year, 147 across the country, 25% increase. Let's be sure and keep these men and women in our prayers every day.
Without any other information, the Commissioners' Court is adjourned at 11:05. Our clock is off. Thank you.